Almost ready to go. You're good to go. Good morning, everyone. I will call this open session of November 27th to order and ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection. I would ask for raise and report from our in-camera session.
Thank you, Warden. Four matters to report out at this time. One, County Council adopted its November 6, 2019, closed session minutes. Two, County Council instructed staff to continue with a property assessment appeal for a property in Watford. Three, County Council adopted its November 20, 2019, committee PM in-camera minutes. And thirdly, County Council heard a presentation from staff informing County Council that negotiations for a long-term deal, an option to purchase property currently known as Bayside Centre is nearing, subject to some administrative details being ironed out. That is, in other words, certain Ts and Is being crossed and dotted. And as a result, County Council instructed staff to conclude the commercial negotiations for a long-term lease and option to purchase that facility and to return at its February 2020 meeting with the final documents for presentation to council and approval by council. The sketches of the building that we're looking at, the new building that we're looking at, are available for any members of the public at the front table after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Item number seven is delegations, and I'd asked for motion that we allow the delegations within the rail. Councillor Broad, Councillor Hand, Cathy Alexander, Director, Blue Water Health Foundation, please come forward for your presentation.
Okay. Thank you very.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Please be seated. More comfortable.
Thank you very much. Cathy Alexander is behind me from the Foundation of Blue Water Health. I'm Paula Ream-Zimmer. I'm Integrated VP of Mental Health and Addictions at Blue Water Health and CMHA. And along with Alan Stevenson, our CEO of CMHA, and Craig McKenzie from St. Clair Child and Youth are here to present about Access Open Minds. So Access Open Minds is an initiative. It's a national, international initiative, but one that is really rising up across Canada. Access Open Minds is a national initiative across Canada, and there's 14 sites. Our Ontario, our provincial government has embraced it as an integrated youth wellness service, and that in fact brings existing mental health and addiction services together so that families and youth have one stop. They can arrive in a place, and it's very mental health and addictions treatment-focused. So the importance of creating a space like this in our community is certainly the recognition that most childhood mental illnesses, they present during their earlier years. So the onset of mental illness happens during transitional age, and if we can become involved sooner than later, we have an opportunity to change the trajectory of the mental illness. So certainly, early intervention is key in all health issues and mental health and addictions included. We also know that it's a significant problem, and we hear that every day about youth, mental health, and addictions, and one that needs a coordinated approach for treatment. Very importantly as well is when we talk about youth, mental health, and addictions, we very much include the family and cares perspective, and families and cares lose significant amount of productivity, workdays, when in fact their youth are dealing with a mental health or addictions. And it's a pretty profound impact in the community, in our workplace setting, and most importantly, in the family unit that's affected. Our Emerge Department is seeing higher, it's seen a rise in presentations, and in fact, right now, we're really doing some, making a significant impact on the adult presentations at Blue Water Health, but the youth one, we still don't have an alternative model, and the Emerge Department becomes the default for that. And that's really not an ideal first experience for anyone looking for mental health care. This is a bed board at the hospital, and you can see the top four out of five individuals are under the age of 25, and these are individuals who waited up to 73 hours in the Emerge Department for mental health care. And that's a real factor in our community. The demand is here. This slide story is a little difficult to see, but it does show that on the inpatient unit, because of our collaboration and our working together as partners for the adults, we are starting to create capacity, and our demand for beds, we're starting to have some breathing room and having alternatives for care. But the bottom line is the pediatric mental health bed, and it runs mostly over 100% occupied, which means the youth either are in the Emerge waiting for a bed, or potentially are on the adult inpatient psychiatric unit, which again is not a preferred place to care for our youth. So Access Open Minds is a collaborative between St. Clair Child and Youth and CMHA Leamton Kent, and fortunately with Blue Water Health Foundation back supporting the initiative. And it's an important initiative for ages, youth ages 11 to 25. It has a lot of evidence behind it. We know specifically that if we give alternative places for youth that is very youth-friendly, they can walk in the door and they can themselves self-refer, that the more we create space like that, the more youth reach out and ask for help in early years, and most important, it normalizes their mental health. We know that transitional age youth go through the most challenging milestones of any age sector, and we want to provide a space where they can come in, receive treatment quickly, and to make sure that they feel connected to the community.
Thanks, Paula. So as Paula introduced me, my name is Alan Stevenson. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Canadian Mental Health Association, Leamton Kent Branch, and I'm very proud to be part of Access Open Minds as a leading partner. Access Open Minds has five key objectives. The first is early identification, so as quickly as possible, identify and diagnose, if appropriate, mental health and addictions problems, rapid access to care, appropriate care. And so we have objectives, benchmarks, targets for each of these objectives. So for rapid access, that someone is seen within 72 hours, for appropriate care, that they are matched to the most appropriate level of care based on their needs, not too much, not too little, within 30 days, continuity of care between, after the ages of 18. We know across all jurisdictions that young people often fall through the cracks because their care is provided by the children's mental health system up until the age of 18, and transferred to the adult mental health system at the age of 18. We ensure continuity of care based on appropriate services for that age range and youth and family engagement. So everything that we do is informed by the preferences and desires of youth and their families. Yes? We have been in Chatham-Kent as an Access Open Minds site now for three and a half years. We launched our permanent site on King Street in Chatham, and we have a short video that will show, that will illustrate what that looks like and what we're hoping to replicate uniquely for Sarnia here. I mentioned that youth participate in all parts of our planning. We have an active youth advisory committee. It is populated by young people with an interest in mental health that have themselves experienced some kind of mental health challenge, or they are peers and friends and allies of others who have. We work uniquely with youth navigators. So the first point of contact to anyone coming into an Access Open Minds site is with another young person, a peer, to help them navigate the system, or in the case of a family member, a family member to help them navigate the system. And we do participate in national research with the youth being our research assistants. I've mentioned the family and cares partners in planning, so there is as well a family advisory council. In the slide, we have one of our family peer navigators who will do coaching, assistance with families. Frankly, the mental health system can be very confusing and very frustrating for families, and that support is really highly valued by those family members. We are part of not just a national organization, but an international organization. We are members of the International Association of Youth Mental Health. We are one of, I think as Paula mentioned, 14 sites across Canada that is an Access Open Minds site. Access Open Minds is a five-year demonstration project with sustainability that we're currently working on. Sustainability in Ontario comes from Youth Wellness Hubs. We are also in Chatham, a youth wellness hub. Both Access Open Minds and Youth Wellness Hubs Ontario have supported our work to establish a site in Sarnia-Leamton. It is an emerging international movement. Frankly, all of us in the mental health space internationally recognize that the majority of mental health problems occur in that age range, yet services are not really well-defined or targeted for that age range, and we are part of a growing movement internationally to change that. Across Canada, I said, as I mentioned, we are part of Access Open Minds, 14 sites. Foundry out of BC in Alberta, 11 sites. Youth Wellness Hubs Ontario, 10 sites. Air Huber in Quebec, three sites now, as well as an Access Open Minds site, and the movement is gaining momentum in other provinces and territories. Frankly, it's gaining momentum because everybody recognizes that this is the right thing to do. I mentioned we're a part of Youth Wellness Hubs Ontario. Okay. As you may have heard, we have been supported generously by the Mike Weir Foundation. Mike himself has been a major supporter and hosted the first of annual golf tournament this past September. There is a growing momentum in the community to support this work. Okay. Thank you.
So the virtual tour is actually 44 minutes long, so we are going to just leave that for you to peruse at your leisure, but it's available, it's embedded in the slides. And that is, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation and for bringing this to our county and our community. Certainly, Councillor Arnold, questions, comment?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Appreciate the folks coming here today. I was just wondering what metrics are being tracked in Chatham, in Chatham-Kent, and what type of improvement are you seeing? It's been three and a half years now since you've opened, and I just wondered if you had any good news stories for us from there?
Yes, absolutely. Actually, Access Open Minds is heavily embedded in a research framework, so we have been following our metrics very closely. So each of the objectives that Alan pointed out, I'll have metrics attached to them. Significantly is the number, percentage of individuals who receive their service within 72 hours of coming in. The ability to have walk-in and immediate service to a peer navigator. So often, we have youth coming in who see a peer navigator, they share kind of a distressing day, and then the peer navigator can suggest, I can have you seen by a therapist in a few days, and some of them say, I don't need that. This is what I needed. I needed to talk to someone and someone to listen. So the time to access, the number of individuals who are starting to self-refer. So if you start self-referring, the community does, they know that it's a safe place to walk into. So we have just a growing number of families becoming involved. We have a very strong family program called Family Connections, and that's really becoming empowering. We also work closely with the police services. So the youth diversion officer is very involved, and they continue to identify how many diversions that they've had from their perspective. So it's very heavily evidence-based in making sure that we're making the movement with this type of project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Councillor Napper?
Yeah, thank you very much. I've got a simple question. Will you be looking for outreach to different small communities, like a community room where you come in and do a presentation? I'm kind of interested in that right now.
Thank you for the question. One of the objectives that we have is to ensure access irrespective of where somebody lives. And so we are part of work internationally that's going on to create virtual solutions, so internet-based solutions that can link people more quickly to services as well as outreach. So we talk to groups, and our experience is mostly in Chatham-Kent, we talk to groups throughout Chatham-Kent about how to access services, very involved with both school boards as well, to ensure that the linkage from students as well as the college ensures access as quickly as possible.
And I can just add to that, what we also are seeing in Chatham is the rural communities, they actually are, outreach to those communities have significantly grown, and the youth are informing us that because if you don't live in the city, you don't know necessarily where the services are, but because their service is so centrally located, it's very well-marketed, if you come in from one of our rural counties, they know exactly where to go. So it's not that navigating, and then that team starts to engage, and they go out to the respective counties, and we have relationships with most primary care providers right now in Sarnia-Leamton, and so we have opportunity to provide services out in the community in shared care or in the youth's place of choice.
Thank you. I believe Councillor Bradley?
Just congratulations and to the Weir Foundation. This has moved so quickly. I mean, light speed, and I think Chatham-Kent's part of that because you have a really good model to work with. Any thoughts, or can you say when you will physically be in a place that will be a center to make this happen?
We are targeting for September 2020, and we are very aggressively working towards that, have so much community support, and we really are hoping to leverage that support to move this project along sooner than later, especially when we see the bed capacity days and where the youth are going. We know that it's an initiative that we need as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for your presentation, and I believe staff will be in touch to talk about a lease arrangement, their draft lease for your operation.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have staff presentations. Heather Allen, Supervisor of Program Review and Compliance, Works, Ontario Works. There is a presentation to be made regarding accessibility for Ontarians with disabilities. Welcome.
Good morning, Warden Weaver, County Council, as well as our CAO and general managers and our esteemed guests. It's my honor and privilege to be here today to talk to you about accessibility within the County of Leamton. We are here partly because we want to talk to you about International Day for Persons with Disabilities. That is on December 3rd, and it's an important opportunity for us to reflect and look back on all of the things that we've been able to do and with your support and support of council. And first thing I'd like to do is just be able to introduce everyone, and I'll just have you wave, just so you can see the kind of people that we have on this wonderful group with us. Our esteemed chair is Councillor Lonnie Napper. And we have Luanna Cameron, and Sarah Shepherd, and Debbie Dreganitz, and unfortunately, Gord Dingle and Greg With weren't able to attend today. And we also have a staff working group, an accessibility staff working group, that I would be very remiss if I didn't bring up the important role that the staff working group plays in moving the accessibility needle forward. So I represent Social Services. Then we also have Anita Trussler, who represents the Social Public Health Services Division. Thank you, Anita. And Carolyn Hodges, unfortunately, wasn't able to be with us today. She's from Long Term Care. We have Chris Vinema from Finance Facilities and Court Services. Hey, Chris. Infrastructure and Development Services, Karin Nada. Cultural Services, Jocelyn Kerrigan. And also unable to attend was Daniel Ink from Corporate, and thank you, Stefan, as the ex-officio member of our staff working group. So thank you for that. So you might want to know, what do we basically stand for? What is the importance of having accessibility? Well, we are all, and that's why I wanted to start by showing you, everybody that's in this room, we are all committed to making the county services, the facilities, events, meetings, whatever it is, accessible to persons with disabilities. We want to make sure, and we reflect this through our Terms of Reference for the Advisory Committee, but also the staff working group, publicly accessible buildings to support inclusion and the support of the independence of people with disabilities. And all individuals, we want to make sure, have the same opportunity to access services as those without disabilities. And we're proud to live that mission and vision every day in the work that we all do across the county. So here's some of our successes we wanted to tell you about. In the last five years, we've had 15 different reviews, and you might think, what would a review entail? And sometimes we think, and this is why we wanted to let you know about this, it's not always the big-ticket items we're talking about. Of course, you need to make sure that there's an automatic door to be able to get in, but it also can be some low-cost things like adjusting that door so it stays open a little bit longer. Because if we're talking about the principle of inclusion, we want you to feel welcome when you come in the door. We don't want the door shutting on you. And also, one of the other big things, especially now that it's getting colder, we want to get out the notion of it's important to clear the snow from the ramp first, because when you clear the snow from the ramp, everybody can get into the facility. And also, our staff focus groups, because our staff are the frontline, working with people every day, so they also assist our Accessibility Advisory Committee with different solutions to help us all reduce barriers. What's very exciting is our Accessibility Finder. It's a part of Leamton Online, and I wanted to mention Jason Hannigan. He has been instrumental in assisting the staff working group and the Accessibility Committee in developing this Accessibility Finder, because in that principle, about making sure we have publicly accessible buildings, we need you to be able to know where those are when you want to get out and about. So that's something very exciting that we've done in the last little while, and we'll continue to promote that so the public is aware, that if you're going to be going to a building where the county operates out of, you want to know what kind of services we have, and that's a really great way of doing it, especially now, everything's so high-tech now, everybody's got a phone. And people look at accessibility devices as a phone. You know, it's not just the automatic doors, and it's all under the whole inclusion. We now, of course, have a centralized email called accessibility@thecountyofleamton. So people, if they need any alternate formats for any of the information that we all disseminate, they can do that, and staff, of course, will answer very quickly. And we, some of you may recall that a couple of years ago, we received an award, it was the county and the city for the mobile charge stations. We received a municipal award through the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association, and we still to this day will get, whether it's our own municipalities within the county or different municipalities across Ontario, who are still contacting us, asking, how do we get involved? It's such a great thing to assist people with their power and their motorized devices, that you want to make sure if something happens while you're out and about, that's how you keep inclusion. This is how you keep independence. You don't have to have somebody with you. You can go on your own, and then, you know, unfortunately, if the power goes on your wheelchair, we could at least plug it in for you, and then you can go on with your day. You know, those kinds of things are so important. We've also welcomed two new members, one representing youth and the other a community resource, and the community resource is around persons with developmental disabilities. And that's why we wanted to highlight, we have so many things, but we know we don't have all the time to tell you of all the wonderful things, but we did want to highlight the inclusive partnership with 13 individual students this summer and their coaches through the Summer Employment Transitions Program with Community Living, because that's a wonderful opportunity for people to get hands-on experience that can then assist them going forward into the workforce. So I congratulate everybody for that as well. So our future direction, what are we looking to do? The Accessibility Committee, we continue, of course, to meet regularly throughout the year. We can't do our work without the wonderful staff working group, and we will be conducting our next five-year plan, and we're going to be doing that by meeting the needs of the community and reflecting the AODA standards. And finally, thank you to all of you for, as I mentioned, everybody, whenever we have meetings with the different divisions, and because we want to focus on all of the important things that have happened, we don't just focus on deficiencies. We talk about all of the wonderful things that everybody does every day to keep inclusion in the forefront, and I thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for what you do. I guess it is things that we, most of us take for granted on how we get around and how easy it is, that there is people and committee committed to making improvements for everyone, so to all the staff and to yourself for heading this up and bringing us up to date on what's happening and continue with the good work. So thank you, and I see Mayor Napper coming forward here. And I see Mayor Napper coming forward here, so.
Unfortunately, it's been a pleasure for the last six years working with Heather. And you can tell by her presentation, she's very busy asking. She uses on her toes, and you dropped a committee a long way. I know it's worth it, although it's pretty, pretty carefully with the city there. And it's just been great to be here for, you've been there for a calendar year, the last 16 years. And I agree with that. Unfortunately, if somebody stole her, then you're organization, we're going to lose it. It's going to be a big loss to us. On behalf of all the folks that you step forward, we'd like to present you with a little bit of flowers here for all your hard work. It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Our next presentation is from Greer McDonald, Library Supervisor, and Susan Chamberlain, the Bookkeeper. Like to provide an update on the One Book Lampton Committee and its activities. Welcome.
Good morning, Warden Weber, members of County Council and staff. My name is Susan Chamberlain, and I'm the owner of the Bookkeeper Bookstore in Sarnia. Thank you for allowing us this time to speak about One Book Lampton. One Book Lampton is an exciting initiative undertaken by Lampton County Library and the Bookkeeper. The idea is to bring the community together through the reading of one book. It's about shared experience and learning through sharing stories. We have an incredible committee of talented and passionate people from Lampton County Library and a couple from the Bookkeeper. I will tell you that this library group has been a joy to work with, and boy, do they get things done. Much thought and consideration was put into choosing a book that would be relevant and of value to our community. Our first One Book Lampton choice is The Reason You Walk by Wob Canoe. We revealed this book at the title at the Bookkeeper in October, and we encourage everyone, like literally everyone in the county, to read this both through November and December and onwards. We have been very busy planning activities that will showcase the themes and issues in this book. And these activities will begin in the new year and continue on into the spring. We are also in the process of planning some type of amazing culminating celebration in late spring. So please stay tuned for more details on that. I should let you all know that The Reason You Walk is abundantly available at all of the library branches and at the Bookkeeper. And finally, I would like to invite anyone here who thinks that this sounds like an interesting and fun project, and I assure you it is both, please consider joining our team to be a part of next year's One Book Lampton. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. So my name is Greer McDonald, and I'm the Community Library Supervisor for Lampton County Library. So it's my pleasure today to share with you a few more details about the One Book Lampton Committee's book selection for its inaugural year. The Reason You Walk. And our committee is particularly excited about this book because we really felt that it had something to offer for everyone, everyone who read it. The Reason You Walk is a memoir about Wob Canoe and his father, who was a survivor of the residential school system. Though their journeys, both individual and together, through this book, they're not perfect. They do make mistakes. But they show us the importance of family and the importance of connecting with your culture as a way to find forgiveness and as a way to build toward reconciliation. Their journey comes together as they navigate a terminal cancer diagnosis, and they do this with both a lot of laughter and a lot of resilience. This book highlights the role that we all can take in building relationships through understanding the experience of others. And ultimately, that is the goal of One Book Lampton, to learn through our shared experiences by reading one book together. Now, I don't want to spoil the book by telling you The Reason You Walk, but I encourage you to read the book to discover why. We're fortunate that Wob Canoe sent us a video message for the book launch, and I think we'll play it now for you to enjoy as well.
Hey, bonjour. I'm Wob Canoe, and I want to thank you so much for choosing The Reason You Walk as your book this year. Now, this is a book that has got a younger-looking version of me on the cover, but the hero of the book is really my late father, Kabasana Kuit Canoe. He went on a remarkable journey of reconciliation. And so I hope that everyone in Amchunong, Peketwinnong, Kettle Point, Stony Point gets a chance to check out this book and my other one, Go Show the World. But I also hope that everyone in Lampton County gets a chance to check this out. Because reconciliation isn't just about indigenous people. Reconciliation is a lens through which we can get some insight into some of the great lessons of what it means to be a human being. So again, it's a great honor, migwet, and I hope you enjoy the book and so many other books this year.
So in your council package today, we provided council with a copy of The Reason You Walk. We encourage you to read the book. We ask that you share the book with as many people as possible in your community. And then we invite you to participate in the programs and discussions. For more information, anyone can visit the onebooklampton.ca website or like our Facebook pages to find out more about the events happening in the libraries and throughout the communities. And I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to share some information today about One Book Lampton.
Thank you for that presentation and your initiative to get this going. Any questions of council? I believe you all have a bag on your desk that you can take to the library and fill up with books after you get finished reading that one. So thank you for the presentation. And our third presentation is Anita Trussler, Supervisor of Health Promotion for Lampton Public Health and Co-Chair of Age Friendly Sarnia. So Anita, come forward and make your presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present to County Council today on age-friendly community development planning initiatives. We're proud to be able to share some incredible success stories that have occurred in our community over the course of the last five years. My name is Anita Trussler. I am the Supervisor of Health Promotion at Lampton Public Health, and I also serve as the Co-Chair of the Age Friendly Sarnia Steering Committee. Co-presenting with me today are Dale Mosley, who is the Training and Accessibility Coordinator for the City of Sarnia. He is the other co-chair of the Age Friendly Sarnia Steering Committee. And we also have Dave Thomas with us today, who is an Age Friendly Sarnia Steering Committee member. Going to pull out some notes so that I can stick to exactly what I wanted to speak to. So basically, what is the purpose of coming here to present to you today? We wanted to highlight local initiatives and community supports that are serving to support an aging population in Lampton County. We want to also acknowledge the fact that we do, we're aware of the presentation that you received from Navigating Senior Care Lampton in October. And there are plans for staff to follow up with council in the new year. We also want to acknowledge that there's a lot of correlation to some of the work that we're doing with other systems development opportunities in the community. And I know that you recently heard, I think on November 6th, from Mike Lapaine on the Ontario Health Team Planning Process in Sarnia-Lampton. Further, we'd like to demonstrate that age-friendly community development is an asset to our community. So why focus on age-friendly? As you know, and demographic transition is nothing new to our ears. We know that our population is aging. We know that over the course of the next 18 years, the proportion of seniors, or those over the age of 65, is going to grow from 21% to 32% of our population. But what's most significant is we need to look at that demographic who are over the age of 75. That group is anticipated to double in size and will be growing from about 9% to nearly 20% of our population. And we need to be prepared for providing the support so that they can age in place in our community. So what is an age-friendly community? In an age-friendly community, the policies, services, and structures related to the physical and social environment are designed to help seniors actively age in place. And we know from engaging with thousands of communities' seniors across Lampton County that everyone has the desire to be able to age in place in their home for as long as possible. Age-friendly community planning is a best-practice, evidence-informed, community development model endorsed by the World Health Organization. Age-friendly community planning is also supported by the Public Health Agency of Canada. And outreach support is provided at the provincial level by Age Friendly Communities Ontario and the Seniors Health Knowledge Network. And we're working in close partnership with those agencies. So just a little bit of a timeline for you. I told you, we've been doing this work for about five years now. We embarked on this journey back in 2015, when Lampton Public Health committed to a healthy aging strategic priority. At that time, and knowing that the City of Sarnia was also involved in some great accessibility initiatives, we partnered with the City of Sarnia to see if we could secure some grant funding to conduct an age-friendly community needs assessment in the City of Sarnia. We were successful in getting that grant and took that money to conduct extensive engagement and research in the community to identify some priority action items to support an aging population. As a result of that needs assessment, in 2017, an Age Friendly Sarnia Action Plan was created, and it was endorsed by city council. And at the same time, because there were so many county departments supporting the work of the Age Friendly Sarnia Initiative, so we had housing involved, we had cultural services involved, certainly, public health was involved. We thought it was a good time at that point in time to strike up an internal County of Lampton working group to see how we could collaborate together between our county departments to ensure that we were doing the best we could to support the needs of an aging population. In 2017, the City of Sarnia, and through the Age Friendly Sarnia Steering Committee, received further funding to be able to implement the action plan in the community. We've been working, and Dale will speak far more, to the specific Age Friendly Sarnia initiatives. I don't want to take, steal his thunder in the presentation. But as a result of that work, I do want to let you know that the City of Sarnia is now recognized by the World Health Organization as part of their global network of age-friendly communities. So some significant work has happened in this community. Through a lot of the community partnerships and a lot of great collaboration between county departments, the County of Lampton was successful in getting a significant, nearly $600,000 grant to do a two-year community development pilot project. And I'm going to be highlighting a lot of the outcomes of that project to date through the presentation today. I'm going to call upon Dale now, just to give you some highlights of the Age Friendly Sarnia outcomes.
Thanks, Anita. As Anita mentioned, my name is Dale Mosley. I am the Training and Accessibility Coordinator for the City of Sarnia. I just have a few high-level things I wanted to mention about what we've been doing in the City of Sarnia. As Anita mentioned too, we started this process in 2015 by applying for a grant and forming a steering committee. The steering committee consists of a number of people who are, have some kind of stake in having an age-friendly community. We started, and then we finished with an action plan. So the action plan basically gives us 42 action items to accomplish. Part of that was, we also developed different committees. So we have 75 different people sitting on eight different committees. And you can see the committees on your screen there. I don't want to take up too much time with mentioning all of them. We also have 50 community partners. And then we, as Anita mentioned too, we also had three different grants that we were able to be successful on that equaled about $75,000, $750,000 that we were able to bring to both the City of Sarnia and the County of Lampton. Ontario invested in these communities, and we were able to do a lot of work based on the funding that we received. Part of that funding was also be able to hire an age-friendly coordinator. Amy Wheeler is our age-friendly coordinator. And we were able to do different things, such as having Age Friendly Expo. We were able to do transportation fairs to allow the public to come in and gain information about transportation in the City of Sarnia. We did recreation fairs, and we also did, we also did, sorry, Housing Fair too, that I wanted to mention too, as we found that housing and transportation is probably the biggest information that people need in this community. So other things that we've accomplished is we've created standards for outdoor spaces within the City of Sarnia and buildings. And we've also helped build, sorry, I'm just reading through my notes here, helped build an education piece on how to operate your mobility devices within the City of Sarnia on sidewalks and in streets. So it was an education piece, it's a postcard that we developed too. There's a lot of other things we've done, and I know we're going to be talking about them further out in the presentation, more on a high level. So I just wanted to say that Age Friendly Sarnia has connected and has assisted probably thousands of people with gaining them information about where to find services within the city and also within the county. And it's been a great initiative that we've undertaken.
Thanks, Dale. So I just wanted to let you know, as much as some of the focus so far has been on Age Friendly Sarnia, all of the county departments and most of the community partners, I would say pretty much all of the community partners other than the City of Sarnia, have a mandate to support the needs of everybody living across the County of Lampton. So while the pilot initiative and the specific action plan was launched in the City of Sarnia, all of the partners said, we want to move beyond the borders of Sarnia. We need to support the needs, and we recognize that the needs of those living in our rural communities are even greater than those in our urban center. I wanted to let you know as well, just to take it back, I don't need to highlight these reports, but staff have presented back to council over the last few years with three different reports, and most recently, just a report recommending this presentation today. Just to give you highlights as to some of the work that's been happening, our partnership with the City of Sarnia and the investment that we were making through the provincial funding for the Health and Well-being Two-Year Community Development Project. So the focus now is going to be a little bit more on the Health and Well-being Grant, because this really has more of a county focus. Lampton Public Health has been leading the Community Support and Health Services Working Group of Age Friendly Sarnia. When we got together with community partners, and I must say, there was a lot of collaboration with county departments from Long Term Care, Social Services Division, Cultural Services Division, and EMS most specifically, to see how we could do something really innovative in the County of Lampton. So we put our heads together. We connected with over 25 community partners, and we submitted an application. It was one of only two community development applications that were funded across the province of Ontario. Seven grants were funded. The other five grants were all provincial-level initiatives. So we are one of only two municipal-level initiatives. So the key objectives of our project were to see if we could create an integrated community care model in our community, connecting people better to community supports and social services. We'd heard loud and clear that people don't even know where to begin to look for services, so we wanted to improve information access. We wanted to increase capacity for community outreach services. And I'm going to identify some specific community paramedicine initiatives, nursing outreach with the Adult Day Program, and a community tail check program. And of course, we didn't want to pilot initiative if we had to pull the rug when the funding ended. So we wanted to, from day one, ensure that we had a sustainability plan so these services would be available in the long term. So some of the outcomes and the deliverables, basically, we worked with the County of Lampton Long Term Care to increase capacity for healthcare monitoring services through their Adult Day Programs. And through the support of an RPM, doing some outreach with both clients and caregivers, they were able to complete 551 health monitoring assessments in the span of less than one year. They were able to make 193 referrals to other supports available to those families in the community. And I think this is a really important measure right here. 109 caregiver support consultations. So we know that caregivers are spending most of their time supporting the needs of their loved one. And quite often, it's the caregiver who may come under struggles, challenges with their own health, and they need support. So this was an opportunity to provide that outreach in a setting and a place that they were at. 96% of clients and caregivers reported the health assessments were beneficial to them, and they wanted the program to continue. and they wanted the program to continue. And I'm happy to report that Jane and her team have been successful in securing sustainable funding for that program. So just an example of how we can pilot these initiatives and hopefully bring them to our community in the long term. Community paramedicine wellness clinics were also, this is part of the pilot initiatives. We held them on a monthly basis in eight communities across Lampton County. These communities included our Kona, Moretown, Watford, Forest, Petroya, Inwood, Bedford, and Sarnia. They were held in locations identified to be accessible to the residents in those communities. And they included seniors apartment complexes, arenas, sport complexes, recreation centers, and churches. The data shown on this slide reflects just a seven-month reporting period from September 2018 to 2019. And during that time, our community paramedics were able to assess 477 clients at a total of 40 different wellness clinics across the county. In addition, through our community partners, we heard that there were some clients who were extremely socially isolated and could not get to the clinics and could they be referred to a specific community paramedicine program. So we were able to facilitate home visits for 14 socially-isolated clients with complex health conditions. And community paramedics completed a total of 138 health monitoring visits with those 14 clients. This is just an example of where those clinics were located and a poster, some of the communication that EMS put out to help to promote these wellness clinics. The telecheck program is coordinated by the Family Counseling Center and we work in close partnership with them as well. One of the activities in our community development pilot was to build capacity for the telecheck program. So when we started this work, we learned that there was this incredible program that reaches out to socially-isolated individuals in the community with daily phone calls. And I said, "Why don't we know about this program?" And the telecheck facilitators told us that, "Well, they had to cap it. They had a waiting list. They could only take on 85 clients. They didn't have the volunteer capacity to support additional people in the community." So we said, "What if we could get you funding to do additional volunteer recruitment, volunteer training so you can build the program, we can promote the program?" That's exactly what we did. So we embedded that program into this grant. And with funding that we were able to provide from the province to the telecheck program, we were able to train 36 new volunteers to deliver the program. 53 new clients have now been added to the program and they're continuing to add more by each day. 7,984 clients were made just to those new clients alone. That's not all the clients in the community, that's just through this pilot project. 58 outreach activities to healthcare providers to try to connect their patients or their clients to the service. And 18 new clients are receiving daily medication reminder calls through this program as well. I'm now going to call upon Dave Thomas, one of our steering committee members, to highlight some of the information around information access. Come on up, Dave. You also have a booklet at your, I think at each seat, we were able to put one so that you can see what the print guide looks like.
Good morning. The Age Friendly Sarnia-Lampton Information Portal provides easy access to community health and social service listings for seniors. Regular update and review is provided by both external and internal resources. The portal has proved to be intuitive, helping those of us without computer skills to easily navigate it. The primary page in fact provides nine huge icons which quickly guide the user into their area of interest. It was publicly launched in June and has now exceeded 18,000 views. That in fact represents more than 100 views each day. And it is rapidly, I think, becoming a favored information resource for our seniors. Prior to launch, 13 stakeholder meetings were held to provide input to website development. And it's supplemented by the Seniors Guide to Sarnia-Lampton. This is a print booklet for those of us that don't have a computer. 7,000 print guides have now been distributed across the whole county. The Age Friendly Portal is an active and it's a well-designed website, which I think with professional technical support from the Healthline Information Network, it should meet our needs for many years to come.
We're just going to show you a video that highlights the development of the website. Back in 2015, we actually were able to secure some funding to do a community needs assessment. And we surveyed well over 1,000 community members over the age of 55. And through that process, we learned that a lot of people had no idea what kind of services were available to them in the community. So through that, we knew that one of our healthy aging priority action items in the Age Friendly Sarnia Action Plan was around information access. We needed to know who we could work with to develop a user-friendly interface. The team at Healthline has been phenomenal. Our expectations have been exceeded through the work with Healthline. It's been a great relationship and we've really been able to show some innovation together in this joint collaboration. I think what's super special and unique about the website is that we were able to work with Healthline to connect with well over 115 community stakeholders to really build that website together. They engaged, they did extensive community outreach. And we heard from the community how they search for information, what would make it easier to find, how we could categorize that information, right down to what colors resonated with them the most. And I think it's something that other communities don't have that we can offer to residents of Sarnia-Lampton.
The Age Friendly Sarnia website is basically a one-stop shop for people to go where they can gain information about the number of different services that are available to people who live and visit the city of Sarnia-Lampton. And also the booklet too. We wanted to ensure we had a booklet available as well. So the people who don't have access to the internet still have available resource where they can go and understand what services are available to them. The logo of Age Friendly, the portal, the research book, and all the other things we do through Age Friendly is to make our community better for all ages.
I see the seniors guide as the common thread of information. It is clear, it is inclusive, and it is user-friendly. It will demonstrate what contributes to a healthy, strong community.
Thank you, Dave. So that was just a demonstration of the website that was developed with grant funding. Happy to report as well that the province is looking to showcase this as an example of something that they would like to see in other communities. Just going to pull my slides, actually, they're down here. Pull my slides back up so we can jump right back to the presentation. Dave has already highlighted some of the deliverables or the outcomes of the website to date. And we continue to grow and reach out to healthcare providers and service providers so that they can connect clients in the community to this resource. In addition, we've created, and actually just launched in September of this year, a new online referral management network that will help to connect not just clients but agencies to be able to cross-refer services for clients in the community as well as healthcare providers. The new online CareDev Referral Management Network was launched end of September. 10 agencies are already involved or online using this. And we've already trained 54 local service providers and that continues to grow. And this is a huge part of some of the planning that's moving forward with a local Ontario Health Team application as well as a potential digital solution to be embedded into our local health system. This is just an example. So if you are in the CareDev Community Support Platform wanting to do a referral for somebody that you know or for a family member and you're looking for Meals on Wheels services within the Wyoming catchment area, it would take you right to Lampton Valley Outreach where you could click a button and you could book, you could book a follow-up call or a referral right on the spot. So just an example of that. In addition, grant funding was brought into our community to create and develop a "Community That Cares" campaign and initiative. It was created to help inspire individuals, groups, and organizations in our community get involved. We know that we need to be checking on neighbors. We know that we need to be doing more. And community has really changed over the last several decades. When we use our strengths to promote an inclusive, vibrant, innovative, and connective community, we help our community to grow. And we're really excited to let you know that one of the new ventures to come out of this community care is partnership with volunteer agencies, and you'll be hearing about it in the coming days, is that we're working in partnership with local Rotary, Raxonya, Lampton to launch a new Adopt a Driveway Snow Removal Program for seniors in the city of Sarnia. Sustainability and research. I told you before that ethically, we could not pilot all of these great things in our community if we were going to have to pull the rug after the two years of funding. So from day one, we set out on a course to plan to ensure that these programs could be provided for the long term. We are working in close partnership with a research team at Western University. They've helped us develop our performance indicators. They've been working with all of our community partners to ensure that we are looking at outcomes, that we're doing those measurements and we're planning for the long term. To date, they've published already an interim evaluation report at the end of year one. They actually presented our innovative project last June at the Trillium Research Day in Toronto with great interest from other communities. And they'll be publishing an outcome evaluation report for us in April 2020 at the end of the second year of our project. Basically, as Dale alluded to, this doesn't even capture all the funding. Through this community partnership, we've been able to secure nearly $800,000 in grant funding and we hope to do a lot more in our community. So one of the benefits and one of the assets of Age Friendly Community Development models and principles are that it is benefiting our community. Partnership and collaboration, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but these are some of the key players who've been part of that Health and Wellbeing Grant project. And the partnership continues to grow. And we have people coming to us, our organizations, on a regular basis, wanting to know how they can get involved. Emerging opportunities, just as we close off on the presentation, just wanted to let you know that the work that we've done through Age Friendly Community Development has been recognized by the local Sarnia-Lampton Ontario Health Team Steering Committee and the partners who are working on that local application. They've actually included the information access website, the CareDev Referral Management Network. And the partnership and collaboration example of this work is a great example and asset in our community. As I mentioned, you'll be hearing in the coming days, we hope, any day now, the launch of a new Adopt a Driveway program. A pilot in the city of Sarnia that we're hoping to be able to kind of package into a model that can then be adopted by other communities in the years to come. There's a new home share program that the city of Sarnia is partnering with Lampton College, a student-senior home share program. And you've heard obviously in the media that there's a new seniors dental program coming across Ontario to communities. And Lampton Public Health will be supporting that with community partners. Considerations for next steps. So we've come this far in the last almost five years. We have, I did recognize or acknowledge the fact that you did hear from Navigating Senior Care Lampton. And staff have met with the group. And we are planning to bring recommendations back to county council in the new year as per the motion in the report dated back in October. We do know that we've done some great work within the urban boundaries of the city of Sarnia, but we really need to work to address the gaps that exist for socially-isolated seniors in Lampton County because that is a key risk factor. Social isolation is something we can do some really truly innovative work and I think there's some really good opportunities for us to do more. Based on the work that we've been doing, I feel that we can offer capacity support to all municipalities. We've done a lot of work with the city of Sarnia, but that through some of our county departments and the work that we've done and some of the expertise in the community, we would like to work with all municipalities across the County of Lampton to support age-friendly community planning initiatives. And by doing that and through doing that, we would like to work with Lampton County residents, staff, and community partners to be able to plan for the needs of an aging population moving forward and continue this work. So on behalf of Dave Thomas, Dale Mosley, and myself, I want to thank you for the time to be able to present to you. And I'll leave it to you, Warden Weaver.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It's good to have an update. I heard over and over in the presentation about partnerships and collaboration. And many things can be achieved and many people can be helped with that type of work. And you look around the council chambers and we all, our sitting members here need to be concerned about the age-friendly resources available in the future and not-too-distant future for us. So I would say, I would say thank you for the presentation and thank you for the work that you do. Is there any questions of council? Seeing no questions, thank you very much for that update. I think we're going to take a 10-minute environmental break here till, I'll call us back at 10 to 11. us back at 10 to 11. Who are we missing? We have, we have a quorum seated. I could bang the gavel. I will call us back to order. Item number nine, the minutes of the open session from November 6th. Moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Loosely. Any questions regarding the minutes? All in favor of those minutes? That's carried, thank you. Item 10 is correspondence from Innisgillan. Motion that we receive that correspondence, Counselor Cook and Counselor Arnold. Any questions or comments? All in favor of that? That's carried. Information reports, we have a report on long-term care division. I guess a motion to receive that for information. Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I have some comments to make on items A and C under information.
Item C, okay.
I just...
I guess we need a motion to receive it to start with and then we'll have discussion. Counselor Arnold, Counselor Bean to receive it. Counselor Byrd?
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to thank staff for their reports that they sent to council and to council for voting this issue back to the open county council meeting for discussion. This is the seventh time I've spoken on the same topic. While this issue is experiencing unacceptable delays, staff and residents at the county's long-term care homes continue to wait for resolution. Issues remarkably similar to those brought to me by the staff and families of residents in our county homes have been investigated by both the W-5 investigative team and CBC Marketplace. Family members are being banned from visiting under the Trespass to Property Act. The reasons they are being kept out is because they've complained about conditions in the long-term care homes. We had a similar, very serious incident in MGM in Sarnia. Toronto lawyer Jane Miedes states that in the case of long-term care, the residents have rights under section 314 of the Long-Term Care Homes Act, which states that every resident has the right to receive visitors of his or her choice without interference. Based on my motion of October 2nd, council received a report from staff indicating that a third-party audit could cost somewhere in the region of $175,000 to $250,000. We have not been informed what specifically was requested by staff, as that would be, in all likelihood, determine the cost. And since all the complaints that I have received are concerning management and administration, perhaps it would be advisable to ask that the county clerk or CFO issue the RFPs and do the contacting so that the community has no perception of any possible conflicts of interest. The main complaint I receive is about bullying and it appears not to be getting better but worsening. Since W-5 and CBC are carrying out widespread investigations, it would be preferable that the county concerns are properly investigated by an independent third-party auditor before the problems in our long-term care homes are viewed on television. It was during the last full county council meeting in chambers that staff were asked to prepare a report on how to attract and retain PSWs. Subsequently, this report was presented on the agenda of the last PM committee meeting on November 20th instead of today's agenda. Questions to staff at this committee meeting indicated that only two reasons were given in the HR exit interviews for staff leaving. The first was scheduling changes and the second was contract agreement details. However, those who have contacted me indicate that there are many other reasons staff are leaving and that bullying is the number one reason, but this wasn't mentioned in the staff report. The problems at the county's long-term care homes have existed for too long without resolution. It is unfair to staff, residents and their families to allow this situation to continue. Therefore, since staff, since county council doesn't meet again until February 2020, I strongly implore my council colleagues to protect our most vulnerable seniors as well as our reputation and vote today for this audit to proceed. And I would like a recorded vote, please. Thank you.
That will be the motion that's at the end that is tabled. So those comments are for the motion that's at the end of the report. Right now, we have a motion on the floor to receive this information report.
Okay.
Counselor Arnold?
Warden Weaver, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this question or not, but I don't remember W-5 or the CBC investigating anything in Lampton County. Did I miss something?
The W-5 had a report, I did see that, and I don't believe it had anything to do with Lampton County. Follow-up, Counselor Byrd?
Thank you. I didn't say that they have investigated in Lampton County. I was just presenting the fact that they are doing these widespread investigations in Ontario and that we want to resolve things and protect our reputation before it gets to Lampton County. So that was just my suggestion, not that they've actually been to Lampton County yet.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion to receive this for information. You did request that there be a recorded vote on the motion that has been tabled and when we get to that, we will regarding the expenditure. So all in favor of this receiving this for information? That is carried, thank you. Item 12, Social Services Division, there's a report regarding homeless plan and strategies. And there is, I believe there is a motion with that. Counselor White?
Counselor White, you'd...
Move the recommendation.
Move the recommendation. Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Arnold, questions? Counselor Bradley?
First of all, I appreciate the report since to get it a few weeks ago. I just want to make it clear, when I read the last resolution and the recommendation, if the $80,000 is used up, then you would have the authority then to take additional funds to support any needs out there in the community through the winter months? That's the way I was interpreting the motion. I just want to make sure I understand that fully.
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Bradley. I don't anticipate that we would need more than the $80,000 because with the coordination, we're going to try to maximize our provincial funding through Ontario Works and through our community homeless prevention initiative. So these funds would be in addition to that for things that aren't covered under those mandatory items already. So the bottom line states provide funding for overflow programming when necessary. So if someone presents at the lodge or the inn and they are full, even despite the new beds and things like that, we may have to use motels again and we would provide funding for that. But we believed that it would all fall within the $80,000 and our existing provincial funds.
And the nature of the motels, I want to be careful because last time I was threatened with a lawsuit for raising this. What is the inception process? And there was one earlier this year, which I filed a notice with the warden and the CIO and with city staff on having full inspections on the place. So I appreciate and I like the motion that's on the floor about the $80,000, but I am concerned about the safety and wellbeing of people that we're using, some of the places we've used in the past. And so how do you qualify what places you're going to use, at least in the urban area, for use by people that are homeless?
That's a good question. Ideally, we won't have to use hotels. We're very much hoping that we'll be able to, with the increase in the beds and the increase in coordinated services through the Ontario Works Department as well as our homeless prevention department, that we won't have to. There are people who choose to live in motels and that happens often. And outside of our homeless prevention program, we do pay for people to live in motels. So we would continue to do that. That is their choice. With the inn overflow, again, the staff at the inn would work with the individuals to place them in motels that are appropriate for them. Do we go in and do safety inspections and things? No. But hopefully the next morning, we would be in touch with those individuals to offer them other supports and hopefully they wouldn't have to reside in the motel for very long if they chose not to.
Inspection and the type of rooms. And yes, I'm aware of that and I'm aware of people that by their own choice are living in motels. But we have had serious issues in the past with the placement in certain motels. And it would seem to me that we would make sure that they're proper and safe before we put people in those places.
I would like to think that any of the motels that are operating have gone through some type of inspection. I believe we do have fire inspections, things that would happen on a regular basis. So if the motel is open and operating, we would be looking at that. But certainly if we received complaints from individuals, we would not place them there.
A decade ago, there was issues with mold in a hotel, motel. And again, earlier this year, I filed complaints with the city and the county on behalf of situations that were developed in a particular motel. So I will leave it with your judgment, but I do think it's really important that we just simply don't say you're going here without knowing the history of the placement.
Counselor White?
Thank you, Warden. Again, appreciate the motion, I'll support it. I think it's important, though, that, you know, further to Counselor Bradley's point, that should there not be enough capacity in the motels and/or that for whatever reason there are issues arising that we have to deal with, do we not have the capacity to find other locations for emergency situations? Don't we have emergency cots in a trailer somewhere that we can unroll that would normally be used in a disaster? Can we not access some of those types of resources? Are there not community centers, churches available such as are being utilized in other communities for this type of situation? I'm just, again, I'm concerned about capacity and maybe even the cost. Is there not a more cost-effective way to reach more people in a safe and, well, in a safe environment?
Okay.
I can certainly speak to that. Under a housing-first model, it really is ideal to try to place someone into their own unit, so they have their own apartment, their own place where they want to live. So that's always going to be our first choice. We know that there are some individuals who have been living at the inn for some period of time because housing is very expensive right now. We're going to be working intensively with them. We've also increased our partnership with Canadian Mental Health Association to assist us in providing some of those wraparound services. That's something that we do on a regular basis, we've just adjusted that contract. So ideally, with the additional beds at the lodge and with the additional supports, our hope is that we can move people quickly into their own units so we don't have to go into overflow. When you start looking at opening a church or something, then you have to have staff, you have to have trained staff. It's really a challenge to have volunteers in a church basement. You also have a lot of safety regulations, there are standards to meet. And the province right now is not finding any additional shelters. When you look at city of Toronto, city of Peel just released their 10-year housing and homeless plan. They all include additions to affordable housing, more preventative-type programs and the reduction of shelters because we know it starts to really lead to generational poverty. So our hope is as we coordinate together with the community and all of our agencies and a slight increase in the capacity at the lodge, that we'll be able to manage the capacity. I mean, certainly if we see a change or something, we may have to look at a different solution, but we were able to manage last year with the overflow and we think that this should mitigate that.
Counselor Stirk?
This is a follow-up to both Counselor Bradley's and White's issues. And my concern, when I read the report, was with respect to the appropriateness of the placement as it relates to families. So my concern is, is are we placing families in the inn of the Good Shepherd, as an example, where children are maybe exposed to, and I don't want to be disparaging, but a certain exposure... but a certain exposure of children to what they don't need to see? And most importantly, are they in a contained unit, as you described? It seems to me that we need to prioritize families. My specific concern is where domestic violence is an issue, which leads families into a precarious situation. And then on top of that, putting them into an additional precarious situation by way of the placement. Is it possible to prioritize the apartment units for family use?
Terms of violence, it is one of our priority populations. Certainly, in that case, we would work with the Women's Interval Home. We would also work with Children's Aid Society if need be. So absolutely, those families are prioritized. We work with them very quickly. And we would, again, want to apply a housing-first model and start to work with them to put them into an appropriate housing. But if there is any type of threat of violence, we would very quickly work with the Women's Interval Home to make sure that those families are safe and protected.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion for the recommendation that was in the package. Seeing no further questions, all in favor of that recommendation? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Committee AM minutes. I would call on Chair Arnold.
Well, thank you very much, Warden Weaver and members of County Council. I'd like to present my last AM committee minutes on the Infrastructure and Development Services, Public Health Services and Cultural Services for 2019.
Thank you. Infrastructure Development Service Division, item one is correspondence. Item two, supporting correspondence. Councillor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just, I'd like to ask for a recorded vote on this item number two. And the reason being is because some of the things that were in there is more a localized issue and not really what pertains to all of us here. I believe that if you look at your budget package that we get from the Conservation Authority, it comes to all of us, members of the board, as well as our municipalities. And it also says that detailed budgets from every program are available for the asking. And that's something that they concentrated on, on that correspondence. And also, one of the things that's not a core service that happens through the St. Clair region was, one of the things was announced in September, and that was an $8 million grant program that they applied for twice on their behalf for us, and were successful. I don't want to see them beat up too bad in front of the provincial government. And that's why I'll ask for a recorded vote on this motion.
Okay. It's been asked to have a recorded vote for item number two. Supporting that correspondence regarding the Conservation Authorities. And it will be starting with councillor Miller. Okay. Item number three, regarding conservation authorities. Item four, letters of congratulations to staff. Item five is information reports. Item six, regarding staffing levels. Item seven, unused debt financing. Item eight, regarding agreement with the City of Sarnia. Public Health Services, item nine, correspondence. Item 10, information reports. Cultural Services, item 11, correspondence. Item 12, information reports. Item 13, regarding library policy manual. Item 14 was defeated. Item 15, overdue accounts of write-off policy. Item 16, regarding Cultural Service Division Community Needs Assessment. Item 17 was adjournment. Councillor Arnold?
Warden Weaver, I move this stays minutes as amended.
Seconded by councillor Marriott. Any questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We move on to our PM committee minutes. Call on councillor Bean.
Thank you, Warden. We met November 20th, and it was our last meeting for me. And I present these minutes for your approval.
Thank you. Long-term care division, item one, correspondence. Item two, information reports. Corporate Services Division, item three, information report. Councillor Bradley?
On that item there, I'm going to move that we proceed with the live streaming of the two committee meetings. And if I get a secondaire, I'll speak to it.
Sorry, I didn't catch...
I'm moving that we endorse that we move forward with the live streaming and issue I've brought to this council a number of times to livestream the two committee meetings.
And we have a secondaire for that. It's councillor Bird. Any discussion?
Well, I'm going to ask a recorded vote. I think of all the work that went on to make with the Smart Cities initiative. And here we are, not even accessing the public, whether it's one person or 1,000 or 10,000, into the committee meetings. And all of you know, the committee meetings are really the meat and the sandwich of how this county functions. And to me, it would bring discipline to those meetings. Secondly, there's a good example just here. The discussion, which was quite vigorous on the St. Clair Conservation Authority motion, which was changed here. And I think the public and media, whoever, should have access to that. It's a small amount of money in the operating budget of the county. But I think it would go a long way. And again, I keep on thinking about, you know, we're probably going to take another run at this Smart Cities initiative, that we show that we're totally open. People can access us for information. And, you know, minutes are fine, but minutes are the record. But what goes on in the discussion that leads to those motions is also important, too. And I think it's just one more way of making the county more accountable, not only just to the public, but to ourselves. So, and again, it's been here before. It's technically feasible. And I think it's, if it doesn't happen this time, it's going to happen at some time. And if you look at almost every council, we record our in-cameras. We don't record them video, but we record them so they're there for the ombudsman. And with the new code of conduct that came in for all municipalities back in earlier this year, I think all of us are aware of incidents that maybe should have been reviewed. You can't review them through the minutes. You can review them through the video record of what people have said and done. So that is why I believe we need to open this up, to install this in 2020.
Okay. Councillor Stark?
I'd like to move an amendment to the motion whereby the committee meetings would be held in this chamber, where the equipment is already available and therefore, no expense would incur in terms of purchase of new equipment.
Councillor Bird, you're seconding that amendment?
No, I still have some discussion further to what was...
Councillor Arnold has seconded the amendment? So discussion. Councillor Bird?
Thank you. Further to what councillor Bradley had said, I just would like to add a couple of things. In our last week's PM committee meeting, when we were discussing the live streaming, there was a concern amongst most of the councillors that it was an expense we shouldn't be putting out simply because not enough clicks were registered on the links to show that people have viewed all of these, you know, live streams. But I would like to point out something. And I know by talking to many people in businesses in Sarnia and other areas that you may see one click on the link, but it could be in a business, and they have a communication meeting where they're following up on things that are happening in the county or the city. And so one click, but there might be 50 people or 100 people in the room watching it. So we cannot tell by the clicks on the link how many people are watching. And I think that's an important thing to note. Also, I've had quite a few phone calls from people saying, "How do you know what's gone on in previous meetings?" And I said, "Well, you just watch the live stream." Lots of people are under the impression that they need to have KOGCO TV. They don't realize it's on the Lampton County website. So I was wondering if you can really advertise this better, as we want to be, as councillor Bradley said, in the top line of communication with all these other cities. Could, when you do your civic corner section, could it not be reinforced in that area? Just so that most people read the paper at some point or another, whether it's online or the physical paper. If they saw that it was available on the actual website and they didn't need to have KOGCO TV to be able to watch it, I think that would be very beneficial.
Councillor Bradley?
I believe that the amendment is contrary to the motion. I think that the motion that I proposed should be voted on. And if it failed, I'd support a separate motion that councillor Stark has suggested. But they are two separate motions because one is talking about using that room up there, and the other is talking about this room. And I think there's a divergence of opinion, which I heard in some of the reports on the debate, about this room being more difficult to engage in. So I do think, Mr. Warden, that they are two separate motions, and that's not an amendment. We need to... Oh, it's like this is like instantly playing football.
We're going to vote on the first motion first. If you could, your amendment will be to move it following. If it's not really an amendment to the motion, we're going to deal with it as two separate motions. And the first motion is that we do video streaming of committees, which was talked about in the committee report up in that, in the committee room. And it's been asked for a recorded vote on that. And the recorded vote starts with councillor Bean. No. Motion is defeated. I guess the second motion would be to hold committee meetings here in this room. Councillor Stark?
I'll speak to that if I could. The motion, or the amendment, now motion, was placed because I understand that people would be reluctant to speak their mind within this forum. To me, that's our job. Our job is to voice your opinion as it relates to the topic at hand. And we all are adults. We were all elected. It's our responsibility to voice our opinion, whether it's here or in a committee room or elsewhere. It's our job to voice the opinion. And that's the basis of the motion.
So what is your motion now?
My motion is that the committee meeting will be held in this chamber and be viewed with our existing equipment.
So live streaming. Is there a secondaire for that motion? Are you... Councillor Arnold seconding that? Councillor Bean?
Thank you, Warden, and members of County Council. The reason I voted yes on the first one is, we're elected. We have to be transparent and accountable for everything we do. And I think it's important that the public, in any aspect, know exactly how we think and what we're doing here.
Councillor Ramboats?
I agree with councillor Bean. However, I think if we can do it in a way that we're not incurring more taxpayers' dollars, then I think that's the way we should do it. I agree with councillor Stark that we are all adults. And if we have something to say, we should say it regardless of where we are. Thank you.
Councillor Han?
I agree with Mayor Ramboats, but I did not vote against it because I'm afraid to speak my mind. It was purely an economic decision. Thank you.
Councillor White?
Thank you, Warden. I do think this is an important motion to present the, you know, the very real and tangible element of transparency. I have no issues working in this room. It's comfortable. I can understand wanting to sit around a table to have that more free-flowing conversation. And maybe for other committees where we are engaging members of the public to volunteer, I'd be a little bit more lenient in that. But since these committees are made up of elected officials, specifically the AM and the PM committee, then I see no reason why we can't engage in this. So I do have a point of clarification. Are we specifically referring to the AM and PM committee meetings? Or are we referring to all committee meetings?
My motion related to the AM and the PM committee meetings.
Okay. Councillor Napper?
Would that mean we'd have coffee here?
Any other questions? We've been asked for a recorded vote. And if they get the randomizer, starting with councillor Stark? Number are we on? We move to Finance, Facilities, Court Services, item four, information reports. Item five, collection agency services. Item six, third-quarter variance report. Social Services, item seven, information reports. Item eight was in camera. Item nine, 10, and 11. Item 12 is open meeting. Councillor Arnold?
I apologize. I was a little slow on the switch there. There's one there around the recommendation for collection agency services, and it deals on a percentage basis. Is there a minimum amount of money that they'll want from each one? Because if they go out and start collecting for library books, I can't imagine they'd want to put in too much mileage and stuff for a couple of bucks.
We had this discussion regarding the library's policy on collection.
Correct. So that report doesn't address the library collection at all? It's solely for POA fines?
Okay. I believe we're at item 13, which is adjournment. Councillor Bean?
Yes, I move these minutes as amended.
Seconded, councillor Miller. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item number 14 was item A that was tabled, motion number 15 of Lampton County Open Session from October 2nd regarding independent third audited long-term care. I need a motion to raise this from the table. Moved by councillor Bean, seconded by councillor Bradley. And this motion was asked by councillor Bird to be a recorded vote. Discussion. Councillor Ramboats?
May I request of councillor...
Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Counselor Ramboats, in the documentation, this was, we got the reports and then it was tabled for November 27th, which is today. So we're following up correctly in the documentation. So once again, I'm just asking that County Council...
Actually, if I could, we've had the motion moved and seconded to lift it from the table. We have to vote on lifting it from the table before we go farther with discussion.
Okay.
If it's lifted from the table, we can have a discussion about it and change it, or... So all in favor of lifting it from the table? Opposed? That is carried. So would you present your motion? I guess amended as changed as far as the date, the meat of the motion is that we do a third-party independent audit.
So thank you, Warden Weaver. As per the documentation, it was tabled until today's meeting, November 27th, and I'm asking for a resolution of council to have a third-party independent unbiased audit. And I would just add to this that bearing in mind, there are no more meetings until February 2020, and this is a very serious situation. So if I could get a recorded vote on that motion to have the third-party independent unbiased audit, thank you.
Is there a seconder for that motion? Counselor Bradley? Okay. Discussion? Counselor Stark?
Thank you. I would like clarification that the lifting of the tabling also included the November 6th meeting, which included the same topic area. So I presume all of the information is now available for discussion. Because Counselor Bradley moved the motion to, on November the 6th, which was seconded by myself, to bring that information forward as well, to be discussed at the November 27th meeting.
That was in the package, that's in their package today? That information from the in-camera was in our package?
I don't...
Was it not?
No, this is... Okay, so with that in mind, I would like, first of all, I would like to compliment the staff on the analysis that was presented on November the 6th. And it deals with, in large part, I believe, what Counselor Byrd is looking for in terms of the performance of the various homes related to benchmarks that are experienced in the province of Ontario. So in looking at the various topics, I am very pleased with the overall performance, save and accept one item, which I'd like the staff to comment on. And that is the benchmark as it relates to residents who are physically restrained, and that would be Marshall Golan Manor. And the incidence of clearly a, something in the order of 14% versus the Ontario average of about 2.5%. Could somebody explain why that variance exists?
So I would just like to remind everyone that those performance reports are still embargoed by the ministry until April 1st, I believe. But I certainly could speak to that data. So it appears that we have a number of residents in that home that wear a seatbelt on their wheelchair. If the person cannot undo the seatbelt themselves, that's considered a restraint. And also tilt wheelchairs, there's quite a bit of controversy around if a tilt wheelchair is tilted so that the person cannot move it themselves, that's also documented as restraint. So in that home, they're working on those issues. There's also some opportunity, if people need those pieces of equipment as a positioning device, that it can be assessed and documented as a positioning device.
Follow-up?
I accept that explanation. Now I relate to the Lampton Metta View Villa. And if it's not appropriate to deal with these topics, given the embargo, then I'm prepared not to bring them forward until April, if that's...
Through you, Warden. I think it's okay, as the board of the homes, for us to discuss. We just can't release the reports. So you have them, so I'm happy to answer your questions.
So another area of concern, then, would be the residents not living with psychosis who are giving antipsychotic medication. That relates to Lampton Metta View, and the incidence of administration are clearly higher than what the provincial average is, significantly higher.
Again, that really relates to the physicians, their diagnosis and their prescriptions. We, I believe that those results are significantly lower now, and I can bring some information about that. I think it was in September, or perhaps earlier, I provided a report about secure units. Often in homes where there's a secure unit, there is a higher use of psychotropic medications. So it's the complexity of the people who live there, as well as the response of behaviors that they're experiencing.
Another follow-up?
And I'd like to make a final comment, that the overall performance, and this relates to Counselor Byrd's concerns, the overall performances that you indicated through 18 different metrics that were shown, out of those 18 metrics, 16 were positive to Lampton County. So 16 out of 18 were positive, and therefore I think it's appropriate that those are highlighted, the positive nature of the performance of the senior homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I just have, I guess probably just one and a little bit of another question. And I know the province does ongoing audits of our facilities, and have they found any issues that are outstanding still from any of the audits that they've done? Or have there ever been any issues that were brought to our attention that we had to rectify?
There have been a number of inspections completed from the ministry. As a matter of fact, yesterday, they were at one of our homes investigating a complaint. There were no findings. I did bring a report in August of 2018 for the previous year of inspections, and I have not completed that this year. I was kind of waiting for the full year. There have been no orders. There have been some voluntary plans of action that we have provided to the ministry a plan, and all of those were identified as low risk.
Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Whilst, I really appreciate, and I already thank staff for the information that they have given to all of council on this matter, but I would like to bring the focus back to my reason for asking for this audit is based on all the complaints I have received from the public. And as an elected official, I am their voice. So it's because of the complaints that I've received that I am putting this motion forward. So I really want everybody to focus on that aspect and not on all the other areas. We've got lots of information that's been supplied to us, but also I don't want any misconceptions out there in the public that there's any conflict of interest by parties involved or anything like that, and I want to try and protect our reputation. So to bring the focus back on the motion is because of the complaints I have received from the public. I would appreciate that.
Okay. Counselor Napper?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. My comments, I wasn't going to make any, David, I decided I will. I've received a lot of the same complaints that Counselor Byrd has, and I think there's been a lot of changes made. And I'd like to know what the date of those complaints were, because some of the people I talked to, these, some of these complaints that's still out there are going back some time. And I know in the case of Marshall Golan Manor, I believe it's the third administrator that's been there. And I look at the reports we're getting, they're trying hard, and I see it on a daily basis, because I'm in Metta View on a daily basis. I see the changes in staff. I see these things going. I talk to people every day, and I think they're moving in the right direction. I'd totally be the last person to see anybody that gets bullied or anything like that, because I have a little bit of a stake in there, too. I have a loved one in there, and I read these reports, and it just makes me feel like I got my wife in the wrong place. And it's hurting, all this stuff, it's got to be brought to attention. And I can't see spending $200,000 to do something that we're already working on. I know staff is working hard on it. I know there's, it can be simple as a disgruntled employee spreading these things, but I know I've talked to people and the issues have been resolved, but they're still out there. And I just, I'd like to see if there's complaints there, bring them here, deal them on a deal on a complaint basis here, instead of doing a whole report, and let's get the bottom of it all. If there's, you know, there's some bad apples in the system, let's get rid of it. We're not going to do that by bringing an outside report in. Bring the reports, bring them to our committee, if that's appropriate, or there's places, things in place. If you go through the proper channels, that every home deals with this. And I'm quite proud of the homes we got there. I think we're setting the standard for the private enterprise, and so I won't be supporting this thing, because I think a lot of those things have already been achieved and are working to achieve them.
Thank you. Counselor Byrd?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. Following on from Counselor Napper's point, some of these complaints did start maybe one, two, three years ago, maybe even five years ago. The reason that they're still coming up is because they weren't totally resolved. People are really unhappy with that, so they want things to be resolved once and for all, and on the cost point of view. So staff have quoted $175,000 to $250,000 to possibly to carry out an audit like this. I'm just thinking, if anything progressed, if people out there, and there are a lot of complaints, if anybody progressed to a lawsuit, I mean, it could cost the county millions instead of just a couple of hundred thousand. So I don't want that to happen. I want to protect our reputation. I want everything to be resolved once and for all.
Okay. It's been asked for a recorded vote. The motion is on the floor to have a third-party independent review, and the vote starts with Counselor Ferguson.
No. Senator Head?
No.
Senator Lucy?
No.
Senator Broad?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
Senator Rambo?
No.
Senator Stark?
No.
Senator Bean?
No.
Senator Weaver?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
Senator Bird?
No.
Senator Bushi?
No.
Senator Broad?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
Senator Rambo?
No.
Senator Stark?
No.
Senator Bean?
No.
Senator Weaver?
No.
Senator White?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
Senator Broad?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
Senator Napper?
No.
Senator Rambo?
No.
Senator Stark?
No.
Senator Bean?
No.
Senator Weaver?
No.
Senator White?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
Senator Broad?
No.
Senator Cook?
No.
The motion's defeated. We move on to other business. Seeing other business? Counselor Bradley?
That's what I'm going to. The rules of order say there's a 10-minute for any delegation. There seems to be different rules for staff delegations on presentations, and I respected the delegation before, and it's good presentation, but it seemed to go around and around. Is there not limitations on the staff delegations for 10 minutes, too?
I don't believe there is, but I would...
No, not currently. In the three days that we've had that discussion here, I'm understanding what you say, we'll have that discussion. I prefer an hour or two, not just 10 minutes. I'll leave it with your judgment. No, I'll leave it with your judgment. It's just, and I don't think it helps the delegations. You know, the longer they get, the more it tends to lose focus, so thanks.
Any other business? Counselor Arnold?
Just a quickie, and I'm sure everybody's thinking the same thing I am. I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, all of our council and staff, and a very safe, happy, and prosperous New Year, because I don't send out Christmas cards.
I would echo that, and we are to that season. Notice of bylaws.
Thank you. It's moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Cook, that bylaws 39 to 41 inclusively as circulated be taken as read a first and second time.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
It's moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Ferguson, that those same bylaws as circulated be taken as read a third time, third and final time.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And motion to adjourn. Counselor Bean and Counselor Broad? All in favor? Oh, Canada.